We do not have quorum today, so we will continue with our presentations. And then we'll recess at the end of this meeting and reconvene at the next meeting, which will be held in Burlington, where we will be able to vote on all the issues that we can't vote on today because we don't have quorum. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda, please?
There is one change. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Item 8.2 should be listed as Hamilton-Burlington Transportation Forum update.
Okay, thank you. So that's item 8.2, listed as Hamilton-Burlington Transportation Forum update. Okay, thank you. And there'll be no voting on that. Any declarations of interest? Seeing none. We cannot approve the minutes, so we'll just move on then. No, we are not going to have quorum this morning. Yeah. And we've just been informed of that. So we have no delegation requests, no consent items, no delegations. So we'll move on to our presentations, which, 7.1, the 2017 Bay Area Economic Summit Wrap-Up and 2018 Summit Plans. And I'll invite Keenan Loomis and Richard Allen to come forward, please. Richard, welcome.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
And just a reminder, do please speak directly into the microphone. You can lift it up or rearrange it, however you like.
Great.
Okay, start whenever you're ready, please.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to come in to do two things. One is to give a very brief presentation on the success of last year's Bay Area Economic Summit, and then to share some of our early planning for the 2018 event. I bring greetings from Keenan Loomis, the CEO and President of the Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. The good news is, he's on Chamber Business in Toronto, talking about regional transportation initiatives that'll serve our community, and also bring greetings, too, from Keith Hoey, from the Burlington Chamber, who's in a growth spurt right now, and hiring and staffing up and doing some interviews today. So I met with them well in advance, and here to represent their views and the views of our membership. It's a bit of an annual tradition to come in here, Madam Chair, to talk about this Bay Area Economic Summit, and to provide kudos to your leadership as a group here. What I thought I would do is to say that we really count on your input, count on your suggestions to inform the next summit, but I thought I'd begin with a video, if I may, a very short video, that paints the picture of our community, Ontario's Bay Area, in the context of Southern Ontario, and a so-called innovation corridor.
Wonderful. Go ahead, please.
Thank you.
The summit is what I call a table. It's a great venue for convening people from a different cross-section of institutions, the post-secondary industry, not-for-profit organizations, municipal government, the chambers of commerce in the Bay Area, to try to formulate agreed-upon plans and strategies for the direction they'd like to see the Bay Area progressing. We have three points: Toronto, Hamilton, Burlington, down into Niagara even, and Kitchener-Waterloo, Cambridge, well, all comprise the center of innovation in Ontario.
There's actually no Canadian economy. It's a misnomer to speak of a Canadian economy, or an Ontario economy. What you see when you actually look carefully is that small regional clusters are driving the national economic picture. And so it's getting to understand and to get serious about actually driving those regional economic clusters. When you start to do that, you start to really move the needle on the national economy.
I think the notion of an innovation corridor in southwest Ontario is really exciting because it is the realization that we are one team. It's our job to power the Ontario and the Canadian economy in large measure, and it's our job to pull together, whether as businesses, as innovation hubs, as universities and colleges, as municipalities. It's our job to pull together and make big economic impact as a team.
Well, both MIP and McMaster are home to some really fantastic, high-quality researchers. And in doing that, they attract other bright-minded people to the area, people who want to work with these people and gain from them their experience. And so we act very much, as I said, as a magnet to draw people in.
Really important that investors are able to provide capital, and it's really easy for entrepreneurs and companies to get access to capital. You should expect from your cluster a high level of organization. That starts with having leaders from a bunch of different sectors. So you need community leaders, you need corporate leaders, you need entrepreneurial leaders, and you need academic leaders to come together and to stack hands and say, "This is really important." Where can you compete on the world stage? So it's a high bar, right? So figure out what that is, and as your cluster effort drives forward, it's that source of excellence that should be your north star in terms of the initiatives that you take on.
If you take entities like the size of ArcelorMittal de Fasco, who have the capability, competency, and wherewithal to pull together some of these advances and innovations, and apply them where they'll derive efficiency, improvements in competitiveness in our area, think of how we can translate that to the thousands of smaller, medium manufacturers in Ontario.
Many of the global multinationals that have primarily looked upon this province and this region as an offshore sales market for products developed elsewhere or made elsewhere are now starting to look at the incredible research capabilities that exist in southern Ontario, and think about how they can tap into those research capabilities for their own corporate strategies. But we need to be careful that, once again, all the benefits of these research investments aren't appropriated and carried off elsewhere. So we want to find ways to tie and network our homegrown firms into those larger multinationals, but use those connections to help the homegrown firms scale up and penetrate global markets.
I think it's really important for all of us to pull together and remember that we're one team. I think it shows terrific leadership on the part of the Bay Area business community and municipal civic leaders to convene this kind of a summit, so that we can have these important conversations about how to make southern Ontario and Canada important for the rest of the world.
My role is really to ensure that tech is driving forward, right? More great CEOs, more fantastic academics, more amazing entrepreneurs, first and foremost, to join the effort and to drive forward an action plan to make the corridor one of the most productive innovation systems in the world.
Thank you, Richard. And that was put together by McMaster?
It was funded by McMaster, it was put together by a local production team
Okay.
that traveled to the different areas to do it, but they provided strategic input into it.
Okay, thank you.
And they funded a video every year for us. Maybe what I'll just say, a couple of words about my role. My name is Richard Allen. I've been a resident in the Hamilton area for about 20 years, and have done all sorts of different activities, but one of the things that I've been involved in for the last 10 years is an economic summit. And we started in Hamilton, and it grew into a Bay Area Economic Summit. So there's a lot of pride and passion that I have for this initiative, and I hope it comes out in some of the commentary that I make today. It's truly a team approach, and I see who's safe, one of our team members from the Hamilton Chamber here, and we certainly have the Hamilton Chamber team and the Burlington team on board. We see this as a very important collaborative initiative between two cities, and working with two chambers, and two city governments, and city staff. And now we're networking out to work with chambers across Ontario, so it's only growing. We think that we're making a difference, and I want to share some of the positive and concrete outcomes that we've been producing together. So a little bit about the story. I was mentioning that it's been about a 10-year journey that started in Hamilton here with an economic summit that was built on an Ontario economic summit model. So probably nothing new, but the fact that we've been doing it, sustaining it, and growing it over a 10-year period just shows that there's an appetite for this level of collaboration in the community. Your committee, Madam Chair, invited us as a Hamilton Chamber to consider taking on a Bay Area Economic Summit in 2014, and we jumped at it. We just thought it was a great opportunity to grow the influence of the Hamilton Economic Summit more on a regional basis, and we knew that there was just a great shift going on in the province to entertain more regional initiatives. Your committee, over time since 2014, has helped inform and guide the program, as well as your participation every year, and having the two co-chairs of your committee participate, and having our two mayors obviously participate in the program, and to share perspectives is something that's very important to us. And I just want to also celebrate all the staff that makes it possible for us. It really has evolved over time, as I've mentioned. One of the things that's really important to us is to understand what we're trying to do. It's jobs and prosperity for our community, but we see that happening through regional and global collaboration. So it's almost paradoxical, in order to drive a local economy, you have to think regionally, so we provide a platform for that to happen. We think that we've created a cumulative impact over the last number of years. Now this Bay Area, Ontario's Bay Area, Hamilton, Burlington, Ontario's Bay Area, is part of our lexicon now, and people celebrate that and use it. There's a regional mindset that's happening when we go out to committee meetings and we go out to presentations. I know when we heard our local city managers talk, Chris, a little while ago, you certainly referenced regionalism, and I was just out the other day with Burlington, and they were looking out the window at their new tech space, and certainly the whole regional concept. You can almost see Toronto one window, and certainly over to Hamilton out of the other one. So it's certainly a regional mindset now. And we're now starting to push on some very specific initiatives. A quick review of 2017. The goal was to work locally here in order to have an impact regionally, and produce jobs and prosperity, and quality of life within our community. Four themes. I think if we've learned anything, Madam Chair, over time, was to concentrate on one or two themes that were really important. Last year, we got it down to four. A number of years ago, we had up to 12, so it's starting to get more concentrated. We talked about smart infrastructure, all of the needs that are going on in downtown Hamilton and Burlington to build in a smart way. We talked about regional goods movement, and the strategies that are coming out from the Toronto Regional Board of Trade in the province of Ontario. And then we also talked about action on climate change, and that came out of this committee, as well as earlier Bay Area Economic Summits, that there's a real opportunity for the Bay Area, the two cities, to work together to show leadership nationally and internationally on a joint climate change initiative. And that was very important to this year's summit, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And then equally important, we talked about an innovation corridor, a so-called supercluster, and I'll talk about that. Then we added two really important themes, which was NAFTA. At the last moment, we thought that that was very important. It was almost prescient that we started to talk about that, because we're certainly far down the pipeline, we were able to educate our audience on that. And we also talked about artificial intelligence, which is very important to this year's Economic Summit, so we set the stage for that. Our speakers, I was mentioning Counselor Craven. We missed you at this year's summit, and you were ably represented by Counselor Partridge. Our two mayors participated, and our premier was involved in the program. Keynote talk was by Tom Jenkins of OpenText from Kitchener-Waterloo. There's all of our supporters. You can see that it's a broad initiative, a private sector, public sector, and other initiatives. The key messages that we thought came out of this year's summit is, we're leading intercity collaboration. The province and Canada is looking for us in terms of intercity collaboration. We're seeing the future together, and we're not fearful of it, because we have so much capacity in here to embrace the future. We're regarded as now part of Ontario's innovation corridor, and that was very important to us, to start to change the narrative. We know that Toronto, and Kitchener-Waterloo, and other smaller communities in between have been leading the charge in a so-called corridor. We're part of that narrative now. I think, Madam Chair, thanks to your leadership in this committee, to start to push on that narrative, that's very important, that the Bay Area is part of an innovation triangle rather than an innovation corridor. That was very important to us, and we're continuing to attract attention to our community. Results of the summit. It was so fascinating, a year ago, to talk about the climate change initiative, and it's a real kudos to the city staff, Madam Chair, that worked so hard in the background with the two mayors' offices and other city staff, to be able to stand up on stage and make an announcement on climate change initiative across the Bay Area, with the premier in the audience to hear it, and the media there to hear it and celebrate it. We thought it was a wonderful platform, and it was something that we were able to deliver on. We can't take credit for that. It was the Bay Area collaboration across the two communities, and we worked a lot on the importance of the supercluster. The lessons learned that we had, it was a sellout. Ninety-five percent of the participants rated it between four and five in terms of a satisfaction level, and there was strong encouragement to keep going, you're onto the right track here. So moving forward, there's certainly a momentum, as evidenced by the things that I've talked about. We have, certainly the two cities are on board, a growing number of chambers of commerce are on board, including the Toronto Regional Board of Trade, Kitchener-Waterloo Chamber of Commerce, as well as Milton Chamber of Commerce. So there's a network of chambers that are in behind us and supporting us, as well as multiple stakeholders, and there's sort of profound goodwill to keep moving forward. Regional connectivity is very important. I know everybody's talking about it in terms of connectivity with roads, but we're talking about it also in terms of mobility of talent, and foreign direct investment coming to our community. And we know that we're not competing with the community next door, we're competing with the world, and we're starting to get those key messages out. Probably the two most important things was this geography of innovation. Thanks to the work of collectively what we're doing here, bringing the two communities together, we're starting to shape a narrative Ontario that says, "We're part of the innovation agenda in Ontario, always have been, will continue to be, and continue to lift our weight." So that was very important to us. And then we believe that there are twin opportunities going forward. Madam Chair, we would encourage your committee to continue the fabulous work that you're doing on all the initiatives that are germane to intercity collaboration. At the same time, there's another opportunity that's very much complementary, and that's the idea of working on large regional initiatives together. One of them is the Innovation Superclusters Initiative. This was the federal government's investment to take a look at large-scale regional opportunities of national significance. So across Canada, I think the federal government put upwards of $250 million on the table for a competition, industry-led, that says, "That money is there for you." Cobble together other money from the private sector and philanthropy, and start to define innovation systems across Canada. We, as Ontario, put a bid forward that says, in terms of our best bet as Ontario, it's probably around advanced manufacturing. So at the end of this week, the bid will be going into the federal government for the Southern Ontario Advanced Manufacturing Supercluster that's supported by all the partners in this room, as well as initiatives and partners in Toronto, Kitchener-Waterloo, and other jurisdictions. So we're certainly at the table with our supercluster initiative, and we see it as a real opportunity to leverage our local strengths in manufacturing, as well as technology for jobs, prosperity, and quality of life. One of the things that we think is really important, when we're at the table and talking to the supercluster initiative, some of the things that I think that you'll find reassuring to know is, we certainly want to be treated as equal partners, along with Toronto, Kitchener-Waterloo, and the other players. We want to be at the table, influencing decisions and so forth, and I'm told that one of our senior CEOs is now at the leadership table, a local CEO, helping to inform that initiative. We also want to push on three themes: the adoption of technology in existing businesses and startups in our jurisdiction. We also want to make sure that we're at the leadership tables, as I've mentioned, and we want to make sure that the supercluster initiative that'll reach almost $1 billion of federal, private sector funding into a pool over five years, has an impact, not just on larger industries, but on small business, the Arvin Avenue types of businesses, and all of those smaller and mid-sized businesses along the QEW in Burlington. We thought that that was very important, and we've been pushing on that. We held a supercluster initiative. Our two chambers worked together with the city. We brought together Toronto Regional Board of Trade, McMaster University, ArcelorMittal de Fasco, and Communitec to talk about how we can engage in the supercluster initiative, and that was held at McMaster Innovation Park. And 50, over 50 local manufacturers were there, and if anybody's worked with manufacturers, they're so busy on the shop floor making things. So to have them in the room influencing this, thinking of Burlington, thinking of Hamilton, was a major coup for our community to influence that supercluster initiative. So as I say, it goes in on Friday, and we're very hopeful that our community will be part of five superclusters across Canada that'll be formally announced in 2018. So our supercluster, our summit for 2018, we've been invited, there was an opportunity to host some sort of a supercluster summit. We stepped forward to say, "We've got the partners in place, we've got a template in place." So what we're doing in June of 2018, we're inviting leadership from across the province to our Bay Area to talk about the supercluster initiative, to talk about the programs behind it, the initiative to build capacity, and to start to share across these various communities. We think it's a major coup for our community to host the first annual supercluster summit at Royal Botanical Gardens, focused on advanced manufacturing. The goals and the themes will be defined. We're reaching out to multiple communities, starting with ours, to say what's important. We have a sense that transportation will continue to be important, as will the adoption of new technologies in our firms. So we're reaching out now across Hamilton and Burlington. We've met with, obviously, our two chambers, we've met with our two cities, and then from there, once we solidify the local support, Madam Chair, we'll start to go out to Toronto and Kitchener-Waterloo, so we're all on the same wavelength. We're seeking funding for our program this year, and you've always supported us generously over the years, and we're grateful of that, and we think that there's a great case for support going forward from our two cities supporting this initiative, and we'll work with you to define the program and to move ahead. The benefits, very quickly, Madam Chair, for our community. Change the regional initiative, change the regional narrative to make sure that the Bay Area is part of the conversation about innovation, prosperity, jobs, trade in Ontario. We're there, we're part of the conversation, make sure we amplify that and seek benefit from that. National recognition, because it is a national supercluster initiative, there'll be a national spotlight on the work that we're doing here. There'll be benchmarking, if not, in fact, global benchmarks on the work that we're doing. When you think of the Catapult Initiative in the UK, et cetera, we'll be looking for what's happening here in our Bay Area to replicate. There will be some local initiatives and funding that'll percolate down to our community, which is very great, and it'll look like local jobs for Hamilton. So I just want to close by thanking this committee, Madam Chair. We think that without this structure and capacity to quickly organize and galvanize our two communities together, we may not have been able to get on board with the supercluster initiative so effectively and so quickly. So we thank you for that, and we hope that you'll be supportive moving forward, and we look forward to your participation in this year's supersummit in June 2018.
Thank you very much, Richard. Good presentation. Any questions or comments on the summit? Okay, seeing none. I'm very glad to see that the summit next year will be more focused on a broader area, because, you know, truly, we are right in the middle of something very dynamic, and I think it's wonderful that we're able to be the catalyst, if you will, to pull it all together. And I thank you as well for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We'll vote on a motion to receive the presentation at the next meeting. I'm making notes as I go along here. We'll move on to discussion items. 8.1 is Clappas and Corners Traffic Mitigation Plans. And I think what we're looking for here is an update on what is happening with that whole interchange, including perhaps the traffic mitigation. So I'll call upon Tony Sergi to give an overview, and you can let me know if you have any questions. Thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In October of this year, the city brought forward our shovel-ready initiative, identifying the Five and Six as being one of the priority projects. It hasn't shown up in the MTO five-year immediate capital budget piece at the request of committee. The mayor has already been corresponding numerous times with the province to bring it forward as part of a priority project list. Once that becomes a priority project, then it'll be coordinated with city staff as to the implementation when it comes forward. At this time, it's not on the MTO list as a priority project within the next five years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Craven?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to apologize to the committee on behalf of Burlington for our lack of quorum today. It's very unfortunate and embarrassing as well. But with regard to this particular issue, I want to thank you for the update. Burlington is interested in this issue, particularly the west end of Burlington, because obviously it has traffic consequences for the north-south flow in the west end of Burlington, and the implications for the Aldershot Go Station as well. So it's unfortunate to hear that it's not on the MTO priority list, but we appreciate the update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll turn the chair over to you, as I do have a couple of questions and comments. Thank you. Tony? So I appreciate this being on the priority project list, but I need to understand, with the incredibly important bypass going through Water Down really being the priority, where does that fall right now within the plans for this, for the interchange? And I'd like to hear a little bit about what the traffic mitigation plan would be, because there will be one needed for this interchange as well, and that would, I'm assuming, be MTO that would have to put that together. If you could clarify, please, through you, Chair?
Through the chair to the counselor. You're 100% correct. If the ministry, when the ministry brings this project forward, they will consult with the existing municipalities, because they'll have to put additional detour routes in case of emergencies and things like that. But most of these projects, as the ministry comes forward, will maintain, you know, a double-lane access and everything else. But how it ties into, as it relates to the east-west road, be greatly beneficial if that road is fully constructed in advance, because then they can actually divert some of the flows to where there's already existing capacity related to Dundas Street, and to avoid the cut-through traffic within the core of Water Down at the same time. Currently, within our Hamilton capital budget, we are looking at the timing of the construction related to Water Down North, the segment of the bypass there that goes from Centre Road to the western limit of the urban boundary. And we're hoping to bring that forward within the next one or two years. We've been in discussions with all three parties. We have design that's been programmed as it relates to going from Centre Road to Parkside Drive. That'll be coming forward in the next year, and dealing with any acquisitions that we have to have in terms of land. The other section connecting to Highway 5 from the western limit of the urban boundary is still, hasn't been programmed at this point in time.
Okay, and Chair, thank you. I appreciate that update, and of course, just a reminder to everyone that I did move a motion, I believe a couple of years ago, that the Water Down bypass was to be the priority, and the CNCP bridge that needs to be replaced on Dundas, as well as this interchange, could not happen until we have completed the east-west bypass. And if I understand, Chair, from the update I just heard, we're still on track for that. And I have been involved in all the meetings, and very much appreciate staff's hard work on this. I know you do understand that it is an urgent issue, and I just wanted to get it out there publicly, Chair, so that everybody could hear. Thank you. So I'll take the chair back. Any further speakers on this? Okay, thank you. And so we'll move on to 8.2, Hamilton-Burlington Transportation Forum. And this is the forum that took place, I believe, back in June. And I'll call upon Peter Toplova for the update on that, if you would, please, as the project manager. Thank you. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I'm going to talk to you about today is the, actually, the Bay Area Transportation Forum and the Mobility Lab. And this happened, actually, in March 31, 2017, and was actually the lead-up to the Hamilton Economic Summit. And in some ways, it's the little sibling, or the younger sibling, of the summit. The City of Hamilton had run a transportation summit for many years before 2017, but for the first time, we combined forces with City of Burlington staff. And so this wouldn't be possible without the collaboration of both City of Hamilton staff and City of Burlington staff, to continue the tradition of the summit every two years. We did rename it the Forum, though, so as not to be confused with the Hamilton Economic Summit. And a lot of what we did here at the Forum plugged into the transportation pieces of the summit, which happened in June. the summit, which happened in June of 2017.
Okay, thank you.
And so, you know, the goals of the summit have always been and continue to be to highlight the regional transportation initiatives that are going on, to foster discussion between city staff, citizens, engaged collaborators, to encourage new ideas, and most importantly, to develop action strategies to move forward. And so we want to, every year, over here, to be able to discuss the actions that were developed, and then actually report on the status of those actions, which has been a very important part of the forum. In this forum in 2017, five themes really came out of all the discussion. There was a full day of discussion, similar to what was happening at the Hamilton Economic Summit that Richard just covered. And regional connectivity was very important, active transportation and transit infrastructure, engagement in education, political and community leadership, and research and communications. These were the five key theme areas. And there are many actions associated with these areas that I won't cover today, just in terms of the time that I have. But to look at, to break those down a little bit, in terms of regional connectivity, there was a real interest in alternative modes of transportation, like cycling, but also there were interest in improved and more connected transit between the two cities. From the political and community leadership side, and I'll get into a little bit more, there was a lot of interest in citizen groups that are both from Hamilton and Burlington working together more collaboratively, and that was one of the key messages. And of course, to continue the regional transportation forum as a good way for everyone to meet every few years, but continuing that conversation between years. In terms of active transportation and transit, there was a lot of talk about closing existing gaps in the network, expanding separated bike lane networks, offering the SOBE program in Burlington, making streets more accessible, which really focused on complete streets, pieces, and complete communities. On the research and communication side, I think there was a lot of interest in the delegates to get more information that's digestible for the community, and perhaps giving update reports to the community and the different community groups in Hamilton, Burlington, who are very interested in transportation issues. And doing that in storytelling ways, so that it's more digestible than perhaps bureaucratic reports. I think that was the comment that we were, that was the message loud and clear. And finally, on the engagement and education side, there was a lot of interest in continuing pilots and also doing testing and visualization using sort of civic incubator-style engagement and interventions. And I'll talk more about what that means. That sounded like a lot of buzzwords. But first and foremost, the key message, if nothing else, and a good opportunity to show pictures of my cats, Augie and Rocket here, this is, you know, the main point we got across was, it's great that the cities of Hamilton, Burlington, and their staff are collaborating, but really, the delegates wanted more collaboration between all other groups, whether they be not-for-profits, whether they be different community groups. There's two cycling committees that we have on, in either city, all coming together more effectively, and doing that through our connections. And yes, another opportunity for cute animals, to say that we have to have a collective. So, one opportunity to do that came actually from a group called Evergreen. They were looking to do a mobility lab, and they've done the lab concept in other cities. They wanted to bring the lab concept to Hamilton. And really, what is a lab, what is this mobility lab? It's really a collective of all of us, whether they be government, not-for-profit, business, community, working groups, all working together on transportation issues. And so the goals of the lab are to increase collaboration, elevate the conversation, catalyze action, and see policy change. And I think what was really important between the forum and the lab was the idea of catalyzing action, because no one wants to attend a forum without actually having actions that they're contributing to and working for it as a community for the next two years. And so I think it's probably obvious now that on the forum side, we're increasing our knowledge and hopefully developing more capacity. For the mobility lab side, we want to do some action, testing and piloting, and then finally come up with some new policy and institutional frameworks. So what we have done so far, obviously, we've met with some key stakeholders, a lot of the people in the room today are the representatives. We had the Bay Area Transportation Forum, and also that plugged into the Bay Area Economic Summit. And so both of those, the forum and the summit, did talk about transportation issues. On the forum side, it was more, obviously, we can see regional connectivity, cycling and transit. On the Bay Area economic side, it was larger mobility hub and goods movement pieces that were discussed, but those things are actually complementary to each other. We did test some light-touch pilots directly after June, and then we're developing a draft action agenda with everyone who's involved in the mobility lab. And so, testing the theories, we did use 101 Day in Hamilton, which was, of course, a festival of civic engagement, so it made sense to try to test some of these interesting ideas that people had mentioned at the summit, or forum, I should say. And a lot of different tests occurred that day in June. Positive ticketing, I'll just go through an example of a few of them. Positive ticketing is one that had been brought up, where we work with the Hamilton police to give tickets to people who are doing things right on the street. So if you stop correctly, if you cross the street well, we'll actually give you a ticket. But that ticket is something that's positive, to say thank you for doing it right. Usually, police are giving you tickets for doing something wrong. So the trend in Ontario and different cities is to work with police to give tickets for people doing something right, mostly around active transportation. A lot of different art installations occurred on these days. There was Bike Like a Boss, which was a series of cycling skills workshops. There was a Bike in Movie Night. A lot of wayfinding occurred, wayfinding that tells people how to get to somewhere in terms of minutes instead of kilometers. So if I told you it's one kilometer, you may not know what that really means in terms of how long does it take you to get somewhere. But if I told you it's 10 minutes away, you may be more likely to walk there instead of drive. So those are the kinds of things. Lots of images came out of that. You know, there's some, again, street painting with different not-for-profit groups. There was a mailbox where you could tell the city where you want bike parking, et cetera. And in terms of some of these pilots that have run in the past that we've worked on, where you might have a parking space party, or someone playing an instrument on the street, have actually been able to be tested by the city and have led to this long-term change, which in this case is the street patio program in parking spots. We'll also work on, with both tourism organizations, in one case here with the Hambur Loop, which is a newly promoted cycling route through both Hamilton and Burlington. So, and there was a lot of interest in continuing this and promoting this more. So in terms of next steps, it's really about collective implementation through the mobility lab and evaluation of prioritized pilot project throughout 2018. So hopefully, we can come up with some pilots that make sense for both cities, that we can try and build in some of the concepts that were discussed at both the forum and the summit. And then we want to be able to implement not only a pilot project, but also a lot of the actions that came out of the summit, which we have much more detail on, and have been prioritized by the mobility lab. And of course, working with McMaster and Mohawk and other institutions on research and environmental scanning around some of the key principles and also key actions that are brought up to the two, forum and summit. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Excellent, Peter. Thank you very much. Questions for Peter at all? Comments? Yes, Counselor Craven?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I did attend it. It was a great event. Thank you very much. Both sides contributed beautifully to it. One of the seminars I attended was the Hamburle Cycling System, and I took that back to the Aldershot Business Improvement Area, and the Aldershot BIA has picked up that theme really well. So it's something we're quite excited about in Aldershot, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. That's great.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Craven. And I'll hand the chair over to you. Peter, so I'm curious, the next forum, when is that going to be?
That would be in March 2019.
Okay, so it's annual in March is when you look to have it each year, pretty much?
Every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, you talked about draft action agenda. What are the next steps with that in terms of when you will present that? Would that be automatically presented at the next forum? Although I'm hearing that's going to be two years from now?
Yeah.
In 2019? Or will you be presenting it to your individual municipal committees sooner than that?
That's a great question, Madam Chair. We can bring back the draft action agenda to this committee as well, if that would be, the agenda will be ready by the end of this year.
So by the end of 2017?
Yes.
Yeah. And if I can comment, Chair, I just, I think, you know, the whole idea of the pilot projects, certainly the pop-up, you know, they're wonderful projects, and if they're going to be, if there's an opportunity to have them implemented, I'm assuming you would need council approval to do that, or am I wrong?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, depending on what it is, we might need your approval if it's going to be a very large pilot. If it's something perhaps small that already has approval, then it would go on without, we would just report back to council. But yeah, it depends on the size of the pilot, and if it's going to involve a big stretch of area, then yes, it'll probably come to both councils if it's in both cities.
Yeah, or money.
Yes, or money.
Or money, yes. Now, my last question through you, Chair. I have to ask, that slide that had all of those darling little puppies and kitties, and I think there was a hamster in there, too. They're not all yours, are they?
No, just Augie and Rocket, the two cats.
At the very beginning. Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it, Peter. And I'll take the chair back. Oh, Peter, hang on. Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter, for your great work. So did you? Great idea.
That's quite an introduction.
It's very dramatic, yes.
Can we do that every time I go to speak?
No, that's okay.
That's fantastic. Peter, you mentioned some pilots, so I'm kind of with Counselor Partridge on this. I mean, if there are pilots that we can get to sooner rather than later, it would be great to not have to wait till the 2019 summit to kind of ratify. So have you brought, and will you be bringing thoughts and ideas from the previous summit to this council, to Burlington, or to this committee, maybe possibly?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the, so the, both the pilots and the action items should be actually finished in 2018. So by the end of this year, we'll have, hopefully identified, one or two pilots that everyone can agree with, at least this mobility lab, and then that will be brought to the appropriate council committee. So it could be this one, or perhaps PW, or planning, depending on what the actual pilot will be. Since we don't know that yet, we're finding out, there's a meeting actually next week.
Okay, so you are planning on bringing it prior to the next summit, which is...
Yes, yeah. So this was hopefully the teaser that would say, hey, great things have happened, now I want to come with you with a little bit more detail.
Nice. You got my attention. Thank you. Look forward to seeing that. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree 100%. I wouldn't want to hold this up to wait until the next forum, if it can come to us before that to get some approvals. Thank you, Peter, very much. So we'll now move on to eight point three, which is the Bay Area Climate Change Update. And I'll go to Mayor Eisenberger, if you could just give us a very brief update. I know it was presented at the summit, but it hasn't officially been presented at this committee. We just want to get it in the minute so we can...
Yeah, I think, I mean, not much to report, other than we've been finalizing structure and forum and plans. I think it's gone to both councils in terms of what that is to look like, and as you know, we're working with Mohawk College, and we're anticipating, and our ongoing work with the province will be fruitful going forward. So it's really a matter of finalizing the ultimate plan with the province, and we hope to hear something from them in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Counselor Craven? No, you're good? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. And the next one, eight point four, we'll move on to now, is the Water Down Road Construction Update, which of course affects both Hamilton and Burlington. And Tony Sergi, could you please give us an update on that? And also, Vito Talone. Vito, are you here today?
Alan.
I'm sorry. Alan, okay, so Alan is now Vito. Okay, thank you. So we'll start with Tony. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, I leave it to Burlington, who's leading the project, and give us an update on where we're with the design and the approvals.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very brief update in terms of the progress. Currently, the property acquisitions are ongoing for the reconstruction of Water Down Road. We anticipate that'll continue into next year. And with that as well, in that we have NEC permits that are going to be required, and some of those are going to be dependent on the property acquisition or dealing with the property owners and that, so that the permits need to be in the name of the owner of the property. So that work is ongoing. What we're hoping for in 2018, and the plan is to start with some pre-construction works, utility relocates, as well as some retaining wall constructions. And the main contract itself would be a 2019 startup extending into 2020, and depending, again, on property acquisitions, that may extend into late 2020 or early 21. So that, very briefly, is the status of where we're at.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and I'll hand the chair over to Counselor Craven. I just have a couple of questions. And certainly, Counselor Craven and I did host a public meeting, which I believe was in March of this year. I think it was in March of this year, and you were in attendance.
Yes.
Is there plans for, are there plans for another public meeting, or is there one required at this point?
At this point in that, I don't believe that we have any plans for a public meeting, a subsequent one. We are dealing individually with the affected property owners.
Yes, and some, a couple of them are certainly Water Down residents, and I appreciate being involved in those discussions as well. The question, I guess, I have through you, Chair, is to do with the, you know, obvious disruption that is going to happen for the Water Down residents, especially those coming on and off the QEW. So what are your mitigation plans, if you will, for traffic that will be accessing off the interchange at the QEW to try and get up to Water Down? Will it be reduced to a single lane, or will there be redirection of traffic?
The traffic mitigation plans, I guess, are being developed. I don't have the details of those in front of me, and that we will be looking to maintain access from the 403 and obviously to the Aldershot Go Train Station through the duration of that. I think that that's something that we need to finalize, as well as providing the public transit connections through the construction period.
So at this point, Chair, what I'm hearing is you're still working on those plans, but will traffic, and maybe you can answer this, it's too early, but will, is the intent at this point to keep traffic, a corridor open up into Water Down from Aldershot during the construction?
That is the intent at this point, subject to gain finalization once we get the contract moving forward. There may be localized short periods of disruption, obviously, during the construction, but...
Right. Okay, thank you. And my last question, Chair, I just want to ensure that, you know, certainly as the counselor for this area, that I'm kept involved in those conversations where necessary. We may want to do a final public meeting just before construction, just to let folks know what is going on. But I also would appreciate a future update as we get down the road, either to this, well, to this committee, I think would probably be the appropriate place for it, because it certainly is going to be a nightmare in Water Down, especially since we heard earlier about the east-west corridor, which will be under construction about the same time, and then we have parkside expansion on the other, on the east end of Water Down, so you know, the traffic will be forced to the QE, and either do Brant Street or Highway Six is my assumption, because we only have Brant Street, Water Down Road, and Highway Six to access from the QEW Aldershot area up to Water Down, and indeed, beyond that for those traveling north on Six. So can you just talk to me about how that, all of that is going to be considered in the plans?
So I think absolutely on the part about reporting back to this committee, we're committed to doing that, and I suggest that mid-next year would be an appropriate time when we have clarity on where we are on the property acquisition front, and then subsequently we'll have better clarity on the actual timing of when the works are going to be taking place, and that we'll commit to bringing back at that point then our traffic mitigation plans as well during the construction period, and at that time, having better clarity about the coordination of adjacent works, you know... to be taking place, and that we'll commit to bringing back at that point then our traffic mitigation plans as well during the construction period, and at that time having better clarity about the coordination of adjacent works, you know, both on the Hamilton side and any work that the ministry may be doing in the area as well.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I would also suggest that, you know, when appropriate, there be a meeting with yourself and myself, and respective staffs from Burlington and Hamilton to, you know, really have a good fulsome discussion about that, whenever that would be appropriate. And so those are, those are my questions and comments, and I just want to say, by the way, you know, good work on this from, from all staff involved. It's been a long time coming. I think I attended my very first meeting in the early 2000s, 2001, where, you know, this was certainly well under discussion. So thank you very much. I'll take the chair back. And Counselor Craven, you have questions?
Madam Chair, more of a comment than a question. We have discovered, as you may know, through the dialogue with the public, that once the new road is built, we will not be able to restrict trucks coming off the QEW, coming off the 403 and going up Water Down Road. So that has created some questions for you and me with regard to what's going to happen to those trucks when they get to the top of Water Down Road. And there doesn't seem to be a simple answer to that one. They will dissipate, I guess, through your subdivisions, or they will turn around on Water Down Road and come back down. So we're concerned about this, but there doesn't seem to be an answer to it, because the EA permits it. Al, do you have any comment on that at all?
Nothing further to add at this point in time. I think that's a mitigation that perhaps with something with signage or warning about the limited access or no through nature of that road, but we'll take that back, and I think when we talk about the construction mitigation measures, we can provide more details on that as well.
I think both Counselor Partridge and I see trouble brewing down the road with regard to that after completion of the new road. If these trucks go dashing up that road expecting to find an easy way out, we could all have difficulties at that north end of Aldershot. So don't know what to do about that, don't know what your suggestions might be, because we've checked and the EA permits it. So we're kind of stuck. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate you raising that. And I like the suggestion, actually, of some signage, some very big added signage, because trucks are not allowed on Mill Street. So Counselor Craven is absolutely correct, when they get to the top of Water Down Road, where it then goes down into Water Down, it's a no-truck route. And however, having said that, once Burke Street Extension is completed and ties up to the bypass, that will be a truck route, is my understanding, from Water Down Road, but we are talking many years down the road. So, thank you, Al, I appreciate that. No further questions? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to 8.5. Mayor, yes?
Thank you. Cue the music. No, never mind, no.
No, no, there's no music, sir.
I guess not, no.
That was a one-time.
One-time opportunity, thanks. Yeah, I'd like to address this, because I think we have much of this in play, and let me just kind of give you the overview. And I think this came out of a previous meeting where we were asked, or the staff were asked to refine the asks, and it's kind of narrowed down to these three discussion points. And I can tell you that on the first two, Mayor Rick and I are both actively engaged through, actually specifically through AMO, on the provincial government supporting initiative for climate change, and with the federal government as well, on my end. And then secondarily, on the sustainable funding, we have continued to work with Lumco and Marko, both of which are advocating on behalf of municipalities in Ontario, and then through AMO as well, on revenue tools that either grow with the economy or provide us more predictability and sustainability. And so there's no easy answer to that one, as you might expect, but it's certainly a good opportunity for us to continue to advocate for those issues. So what I'd like to do is to bring back both the federal and provincial positions on those issues, on that issue specifically, on sustainable funding. It's a topic of conversation at the Big Mayor's Caucus through FCM as well, nationally, so all of the 21 major city by population, cities come together and caucus on, you know, what we're going to be asking the federal government for, and this topic is top of mind each and every time as well, on an ongoing basis, because we still have, beyond the gas tax issue, a cap-and-hand type of funding approach on infrastructure. And as you know, the province is now requiring not only asset management plans, but asset management plans with a timeline horizon in terms of how you get to sustainability on the asset management plan that you've created. So there's going to be a huge demand for resources to be able to achieve that, and I think the argument from the cities' side is, provincially and both federally, is that you need to be able to provide some consistent, significant, longer-term funding that we can predictably use to fulfill our asset management plans. So that's been an active, you know, area of discussion on an ongoing basis. So on those first two, on the climate change and on the funding issues, we're very active, both Mr. Rick, Mayor Goldring and I. On the last one, I have had conversations on a one-off basis with our local MPs, and I know that we were intending to meet with all of the MPs to talk about that. I have to be honest, we have had much on our plate, and we haven't been able to achieve that, to be fair. So it's still a, an issue that we would like to achieve, but I think the mayor and I have both, I think, have had conversations with our respective MPs, and, you know, there's consideration on their side. I have to be honest and tell you that I don't think it's the top of their priority list right now either, but it's something that I think we need to continue to push on. So I think our next effort will be to ask for a collective meeting between the MPs, between Hamilton and Burlington, and have a more fulsome discussion. And I would also ask that the cities come together and put on paper a more specific ask, which I think we've had general discussions, and, you know, that the answer we get back from them is, well, what is it you're looking for specifically? Are you looking for money? Are you looking for us to do it? Are you looking for ownership? What is it specifically that you're looking to do that we can then take back and work through their process? So I would ask, we will facilitate a meeting, I think Mayor Goldring and I, but at the same time, I would ask our staffs to come together and put something specific on paper that we can put on the table for them to take back to their respective governments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. And so that is an update on the major priority discussions that we were looking to have with our MPPs. So thank you very much for that. And Chris Murray, did you want to add anything to that, or James?
I don't know we have much more to add. I think both James and I have noted the request for specifics, and so I'm sure we'll be forwarding that on with the two appropriate staff, and we'll get together to make sure that we're clear on what's, what the specific ask ought to be of our federal government.
Okay, thank you. And we will continue to keep these topics on the agendas going forward, so there will be opportunities certainly to update. Moving on to 8.6, the Randall Reef Update. Mark Bainbridge, Director of Water and Wastewater, and Alan Maggi, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Maggie, the Executive Director of Capital Works in Burlington, if you could give us an update, please.
Do you have a preference for an order, Madam Chair?
They could both come up together if they want, or individually. You can sit on this side, it's okay.
I can certainly...
If you want to sit beside Mark, and then perhaps you can do a back and forth.
Absolutely, I can certainly start, thank you very much. This is a partnership project for the Randall Reef Sediment Remediation of Hamilton Harbor, and certainly one that is a key requirement within the formula for delisting Hamilton Harbor. So we do need to see this project through to completion in order to get delisting, among other projects, that affect the harbor. And essentially, this is a transformative project that will improve the ecological health of Hamilton Harbor. For information, you can always go to randallreef.ca, that was a website set up dedicated to the project, so that's up and running, has been for a little while now. We have three phases of work, and essentially the ECF component, stage one, was started in 2016 and continues through to the end of 2017 here. A couple of key things in terms of 2017, as everybody knows, we had very, very high lake water levels that did have an impact on the project in terms of the work, when they could do certain tasks on the project. So throughout the year, we've been finishing up the sheet pile driving. That process could unfold relatively normally, but some of the connectivity pieces of tying those sheet piles together was interrupted by the high lake water level. So the key thing that characterizes 2017 was an acceleration plan, and I kind of give credit to Environment Canada, leading this project, and while the first half of 2017 showed some concerns, that has been recovered in, at the end of the year here, closing out till December. So we're completely on track and on schedule and on budget to have phase one completed in 2017 by the end of December. The other thing that characterizes 2017 is the award of the stage two contract. So stage one was the construction of the sheet pile structure, and stage two is the dredging activity. So we will see dredging contractors mobilizing on-site through the winter for a start early in 2018, so everything on track there. Alan, I'm not sure if you have any other points to make?
Al, anything else to add?
No, I think that covered things off pretty well. There is one more procurement that's going to happen for an oversight engineer, that's ongoing and will be awarded, as I understand, in December. And then the next meeting of the Randall Reef Executive Committee is scheduled for January. We'll get a more detailed update on the progress through this fall and the plans for the construction startup in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I'll hand the chair over, I of course have a couple of questions. And Mark, you and I had, I'd raised this question in one of our meetings this week, the General Issues Committee, and the Randall Reef Project is scheduled for completion, I believe it was 2022, can you just clarify that?
Yes, that's correct.
And with regards to the delisting of that particular hotspot or area from the hotspot list through you, Chair, can you explain the process for delisting? I don't want folks to think that come 2022, when it's finished, that it automatically gets delisted from wherever that list is. So could you just outline who is the keeper of the list, and how do we get off it?
Thank you, through the chair. That's a, that's a process that includes the International Joint Commission. So when, we work with the local Hamilton Harbor Remedial Action Plan Office, who coordinates all of the activities of stakeholders within the region that are undertaking multiple projects throughout the watershed. The key aspect of this is to collect the data that allows us to stipulate that we've met the targets that have been set through a collective communication, collective collaboration of stakeholders that said, we like to, we would like to see this status of water quality or status of accessibility or status of wildlife, and there's a number of targets that have been set. With the projects that we've completed, we expect that we would see a remediation in many, many areas of monitoring of the harbor. And once that data can be produced, we would proceed forward with a report that would call for a delisting of the harbor. The, there is an interim step that is possible, there still has to be a strategic conversation in this regard, but an area of recovery is basically the middle ground between completion of projects and waiting for remediation to show the benefits in terms of the data set. So we might be able to step through that process and change our designation before we actually delist as to, as to an area of recovery. But that's, that's a projection, that's an assumption of mine at this point in time, we still have to have a collaborative conversation of stakeholders to see if that makes sense.
And thank you for that, Mark. Through you, Chair, you know, we certainly, it is going to take time to collect that data. So, you know, do you think it's going to be five years, 10 years? I guess that's very hard for you to answer and project, because it's all in terms of the remediation, how that goes along, and the data that we can collect from that, and then of course you have to analyze that data over time. Is that accurate?
Yes, certainly that's accurate. I think from my perspective, it is difficult to put a timeline on it, but I'll try here and say that the scientific teams, the collaboration, the partnership, and the people that have their focus on Hamilton Harbor is probably greater than any other area of concern in Canada, for sure, and in North America, possibly. So we've got a lot of smart people that have put this plan together. I am confident that we've got the formula very close to correct or perfect with the amount of time, effort, and energy that's been spent on it. But I think that certainly there's going to be a lag between when we complete projects versus when we see the true benefits in the environment. That's the way the environmental system works, is that it'll, it'll take some time to regenerate. And we will be collecting that data. I would guess that it's probably between a five- and 10-year process, could be sooner if we're lucky, it could be a little later if we haven't got it quite, quite right and need to make adjustments.
And thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. You know, I think it's good to have some sort of a timeframe, so it doesn't seem like this open black hole out there that we don't really know what the time is, but even though your voice has been recorded as saying this, we're not going to hold you to it, okay? But that is, that is encouraging news, and I thank everyone for their efforts on that. And I'll take the chair back.
Mayor Eisenberger has a question.
Mayor Eisenberger, please.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for all that have come together on this, this great work. You know, it's probably a good time to kind of highlight, again, the amazing success that the remedial action plan has been between Burlington, Hamilton, province, the federal government, the stakeholders, the group that's been, you know, actively pursuing this, including Center for Inland Waters, and all of the experts that have been part of this. It has been an astounding effort to bring harbor quality, water quality back to as good as it can be. So I think we're getting closer to that, and I think that this one remaining toxic hotspot has been the kind of driving force to get us, to get into the process of delisting the harbor as a toxic hotspot location. So from the, you know, that's always been the motivation to, to, you know, do the environmental work, that's a priority, get off the list, which is another priority, and bring the harbor quality, water quality back to, you know, something that we can be proud of as opposed to disgusted by, and that was certainly the case 30 or 40 years ago. So hundreds of millions of dollars has been spent, probably another 100 million to go in terms of the Randall Reef. And it'll likely not be the end of work that we might do in future water quality issues, but it certainly gets us a long way into getting off of this toxic hotspot list that identifies toxic hotspots around the world, not just in Canada. So the IJC has been very vocal on their standards and their issues of how do you get to getting off the list? I have no doubt that we will, in due time, achieve that. But more importantly, we have achieved encapsulating and hopefully eliminating the potential of all of this toxic material getting into the rest of the harbor. That is really the big win here in terms of what we're able to achieve. And I know there was a long discussion about should we take it out or leave it in. Taking it out had its issues, leaving it in has its issues. Ultimately, collectively, it was decided that leaving it where it is in situ and encapsulating it is probably the best result that would minimize the kind of negative impact both in the water and wherever you might take this stuff, if you were to take it out. So I just want to laud the efforts of everyone that's been working on this over the last 30 years, that has brought us to this point. I would say that the Port Authority, when I was there, took a leadership role at that time to keep the process moving, and then it certainly has morphed into participation from both Halton and Burlington and Hamilton, and all of our provincial and federal representatives to lead us to where we are today, and hopefully bring that encapsulated area into some good use into the future. So we've come a long way, and I think it's a good time to herald that. We can't say that often enough, we're not done, but we certainly have achieved much collectively that brings our water quality in the harbor back to some sensible quality level, that has brought wildlife back and the fisher back. People are getting greater access to the waterfront, both on the Burlington side and the Hamilton side, and we would never be able to do a waterfront development on the, on Pier 8, had we not addressed the water quality issues going forward. So I just want to say, congratulations to everybody, this has been a great success story, and the success continues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that very much. Counselor Craven?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I would like to echo that, it's certainly something we can all be very proud of. Summer of 2016, Mayor Goldring and I took a boat ride out to the Randall Reef, had a good tour. a good tour of what's going on out there, and I can tell you that we're very proud of Halton and Burlington's contribution. I'm particularly interested in this subject, because all of Burlington's interest in Hamilton Harbor lies along the shoreline in my ward, so thanks to all involved.
Yes, thank you, I echo those comments as well, so thank you, Mark, thank you, Al, appreciate the update very much. So moving on to motions, we have no motions, and we have no notices of motion. Move on to item number 11. On item number 11, Councilor Craven and I, as co-chairs, we've requested that the listed items that are on your, whatever that color is, chartreuse, agenda, be standing items that will be coming forward on all future agendas, and we've also requested that the next meeting of the Greater Bay Area Subcommittee include presentations on two items, one being the Hamilton waterfront development presentation, and the other one being the Burlington Beach Master Plan, so if we put those two presentations on. Any voting will happen at the next meeting, as I've said before, we will not be moving into closed session, because we don't have quorum, but we will certainly move this to the next meeting, and as I understand, there has been a question about whether we can move into private and confidential, in camera, and Madam Clerks, both of you will be able to investigate that as we go forward for our next meeting, okay? So I will just recess this meeting, if we have no further business. Mayor Eisenberger, yes?
Next meeting date.
Uh, next meeting date, Madam Clerks?
Has not been said at this time.
Okay, may I suggest that we do that post-haste, so we don't, yeah, I think we'd probably look at February?
Early February.
Yeah, I think, I think early February, Madam Clerk, is what I'm hearing from the committee. Okay, and we'll circulate that and get that around, get it into everybody's, everybody's calendars as soon as possible, so we'll just recess this meeting, and reconvene at the next meeting in February. Thank you, everybody, thank you, staff, I appreciate it.